Just give the state, please go call things. Keep time.
Good evening to everyone.
Good evening to you.
I've called the May ninth, twenty seventeen Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I want to note that we have a forum. I would ask now if everyone would please stand. We have Jonathan Hammond from Rural Retreat Nuclear and Church do an invocation and remain standing for the players. Jonathan?
My family and I are raising goats right now. And a quick, quick story. The other day, in the midst of kidding season, I had to be out of town. Left my old man in charge of the dairy herd and the kids. He lost a goat. He looked all over for hours. Called the kids down. We have five kids. Looked around for a couple more hours, finally realized this goat was actually not missing because it did not exist. It strikes me, though, that this is your job tonight. To look for that which may not exist, to find that which does not realize it may need to be found. Let us pray. Oh, good shepherd of all the sheep, we do give you thanks for this night, for this time to be together as your people, for this group that is gathered to discuss the future, the plans of men. We pray that you would be present, that your guidance and hand would lead those who make decisions, who make comments, that peacefully we may work together for a world that is better in your sight. Guide us and lead us this day and always. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome everyone this evening. We'll get right into our agenda. We have a few items to take care of before we go into the public hearings. First item on our list is citizens' time.
All right. First name on the list, Ms. Linda Meyer.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'd like to thank you for putting the budget online so we can all look at it, but however, we are missing the salary schedule, so we'd appreciate it if you would post the employee's salary schedule as soon as possible. Thank you.
Did anybody else sign up for just citizens' time? Not the six-year road plan, but just for citizens' time? Would anybody would like to speak that didn't sign up for citizens' time? Okay. Hearing no one else, we'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting of April the twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeenth. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I like that motion, Jim.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any corrections or changes need to be made. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Warren?
Aye.
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 The chair votes. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay the invoices. Does any board member would like to pull out an invoice or have any questions? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Crockett Cove and East Crockett Cove Agricultural and Forestry District Ordinance. And I'll read the hearing. In compliance with section fifteen point two dash forty-three eleven of the Code of Virginia, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing. The propose of the public hearing, the purpose of the public hearing is to consider adopting amendment number two dash two ordinance number ninety-nine point three entitled Crockett Cove, East Crockett Crockett's Cove Agricultural and Forestry District Ordinance of With County, Virginia. The proposed amendments will extend the district for a period of ten years. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May the ninth, twenty-seventeenth, at seven oh five PM in the boardroom of the With County Administration Building, three forty South Sixth Street, West Virginia. The Board of Supervisors will hear comments from citizens concerning the adoption of such amendment. A copy of the amendment, map, and other related matters are available for review at the county administration's office. Ballers of the With County Board of Supervisors. Stephen D. Barrett, County Administrator. Now, you want to quickly summarize, Stephen, what this public hearing is about?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Crockett's Cove and East Crockett's very big forestal district. It's been in existence since the late nineties. We've previously done a review on it. We had to do a ten-year review. The Planning Commission and the Agricultural and Forestry Advisory Committee has completed their review. They have held their meetings as required by law and have passed a recommended dis-ordinance for adoption. It includes a total of four thousand nine hundred and thirty acres to be included in the Crockett's Cove and East Crockett's Cove Ag and Forestry District. This will extend the time period for another ten years until it needs to be reviewed in two thousand and twenty-seven.
Okay. Thank you for summary, Mr. Barrett. I will now open the floor up for any citizen who would like to comment on the public hearing. Concerning the amendment to the Crockett's Cove and East Crockett Cove Agriculture and Forestry District Ordinance. Here and now, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt ordinance ninety-three, amendment to number two, the ordinance ninety-three, ninety-nine point three.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second and discussion. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes. Moving on to our second public hearing. Notice of public hearing, Virginia Department of Transportation and the Board of Supervisors of With County, in accordance with section thirty-three point one dash seventy point oh one of the Code of Virginia, will conduct a joint public hearing in the boardroom of the With County Administration Building, three forty South Sixth Street, Whipple, Virginia, two four three eight two, at seven ten PM on May the ninth, twenty-seventeenth. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed secondary six-year plan for fiscal year twenty-seventeen slash twenty-eighteen through twenty-twenty-two dash slash twenty-twenty-three. In With, in With County and on the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year twenty-seventeen slash twenty-eighteen, copies of the proposed plan and budget may be reviewed at the Whipple Regency Office of the Virginia Department of Transportation located at twenty-eight forty-three Chapman Road, Whipple, Virginia, two four three eight two, or at the With County offices located at three forty South Sixth Street, Whipple, Virginia. All projects in the secondary six-year plan are eligible for federal funds will be included in the statewide transportation improvement program, which documents how Virginia will obligate federal transportation funds. Persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in the hearing should contact the Virginia Department of Transportation at two seven six, two two eight, twenty-one fifty-four. Persons wishing to speak at the public hearing should contact the With County Board of Supervisors at two seven six, two two three, forty-five hundred. And now, I ask Mr. Russell to come up and give a summary of what we're doing before we go into public comments.
Do you have the existing six-year plan?
I'll briefly go over what's currently on the six-year plan, the projects. On the first sheet we're looking at here, this shows the six-year allocations for fiscal year twenty-eighteen through twenty, okay, it's twenty. So that is this, the current six-year plan allocations we are looking at for the next six years. Total is three million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And that being said, looking at the projects that are on the six-year plan, this allocation does allow them all to be fully funded, and we can also look at adding an additional one million and thirty-four thousand dollars worth of projects, which is, if we do rural rustic projects relatively, we're looking at about five miles of unpaved roads we could add, if that's, if that's the wishes of the board. The projects on the next sheet that are currently on the plan. For St. Peter's Road Project, it was recently completed. We have Myrtle Lane. Two projects on Sharon's Drive. We have two projects on New Bethel Road. Crawford Road. We have a section of Major Graham Road, Nixon Road, Pampala, a portion of Miller's Creek, another portion of Major Graham, Mount Erie Road, Wilkins Lane, and Pope Road. So those are the projects that we had put on the plan and approved as of last year. So now, this public hearing, the reason we're having it is to take input from the board as well as the citizens of projects that they would like to see added with the additional allocations that we have, so. The, also, y'all had, you all had sent a list for us to review projects to see if they would be rural rustic eligible, and we have completed that review, and I passed out a spreadsheet that kind of goes over that. King's Chapel Road, it would be eligible. Golean Fork. Miller's Creek, a half-mile section of it. Glade Road, four tenths of a mile section. Skowanda, one point one mile section. Back Road, one point one mile. Jonestown, three tenths of a mile. Walters Road, four tenths of a mile. Walton Furnace Road, eight tenths of a mile. All of those are eligible. The Walton Road, Walton Furnace Road section, that is the portion coming off of Route one hundred up to the packaging plant.
Route one hundred?
Or Wiser Highway. Is that right?
Six nineteen.
Okay.
Oh, you tell me that drive home?
No, Walton Furnace.
Walton Furnace.
Comes off six nineteen, Alstonsville, where we go up to the.
You're right. So I made a, I made a topic of rural rust. But that comes up there to the packing plant, just past the packing plant, and of course, when the traffic count, and to be rural rustic eligible, you're supposed to have a traffic count of fifty. But we all know during the seasonal time when the pumpkin trucks are running, that exceeds that, so I don't believe that would be a problem, even though when they took this count, it was forty at the time. Considering the heavy traffic count in the fall, I believe they would accept that. The other end of Walton Furnace, it could be done as a rural rustic, but we have some issues we'd have to work out. It's currently got cattle guards on it, and we wouldn't want to hard surface it within cattle guards existing and cattle in the roadway, so if we can work with the property owners, if they'd want to fence their cattle out of the road, then.
That cattle guard is right in front of Mr. Collins's house. I don't know who owns it on both sides of that.
Did you hear Tommy Stone owns it?
Tommy Stone. Did he sell out too?
They're talking about it. I don't know if it's been done yet or not. The bottom, I don't know if it's been done yet or not.
But that, the roadway would qualify for rural rustic, but I mean, we'd have to get the cattle out of the road. We don't want to, we don't want paved road and increase traffic speeds and then have cattle in the road, so right now, it's a gated road with cattle guards, and we'd have to address that.
That's not to say it's going to help Mr. Collins, because he don't have any cattle. But he's, he's at the upper end of it.
With the upper end towards Sanders Mine, or?
Forward Walton Furnace, yeah, ten.
I mean, that's, what we looked at was coming down half a mile. I mean, we don't have to go the full half a mile, so how far is it down to the first cattle guard?
About ten, just a little over ten.
I mean, we could potentially go to the first cattle guard, but that's something we can look at.
Would we look to move in the cattle guard there? Below my house?
That would be something we'd have to discuss with the property owner that's got the cattle guard.
I'll relieve all the cattle, five hundred tractor-trailers come through there in about eight weeks.
I understand. Also, the Dry Pond Road, it could be done rural rustically, but it does have a low traffic count, it's forty vehicles a day. So I don't know that that, you know, when you look at other roads, it's got three hundred and thirty, two hundred, you know, where does you priority fall? But it could be, other than the low traffic count, so. Connors Valley Road, Joe, that's another one that we would have a lot of issues on it. The property owner at the end of the pavement, you know, he's got cattle that he don't want to block them from getting to the creek, so we'd have to look at getting access, fencing the road and getting access under the road with a pipe or something to the creek, as well as removing the cattle guards on that road, so. But it could be done rural rustically if the property owner was willing to work with us to address those issues.
Let's go back to that, because it's been a while. If we move up on that first floodplain bench.
Then it's not rural rustic.
That's what I was telling them in here a while ago. All that stay rural rustic, it's got to stay below the creek, because the creek right through there is higher than the road, and one inch of rain, and y'all got a problem, and those people got a problem. So that's why I don't think it really qualifies under rural rustic, because the topo of the land will not let it fall under rural rustic, not just there in that lowland. When you get on up there to the upper end, you got that same problem again, that the water is higher than the road, and you got that bluff that I don't think you can get sixteen feet through there, right, right before you get to the end where we repaired that curve a couple of years ago. I just don't see how it can qualify as a rural rustic, but we would like to get it on the list, back on the list for secondary improvement on a six-year plan. It just won't, I don't think you can make it be real, rural rustic. It don't fit the profile.
I think a couple of years ago, we did give y'all some estimates as far as revenue sharing to make those improvements and to realign the road and stuff.
Yeah, you made money available there, and we never could get participation of the people that come up with their app. But our track space is growing big down there, there's nice homes. It is in With County, you just can't get there from here.
We can, I can get you, we can put that on the six-year plan, and if it's not rural rustic, it's going to construction, which is going to put it in the same price range as a St. Peter's project or a Johnny Lane, you know, the, the price is going to escalate significantly, so.
And you wouldn't have to do it all at one time. You can, you break the job up. Does that make the pleasure of the board, Mr. Chairman, to put it in, in the six-year plan, but not as a rural rustic?
Well, after the public hearing, we'll discuss it.
All right.
And see what, what's the pleasure of the board.
May I ask, Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Given present, I mean, on the six-year plan that we have approved, and these projects are going to take place, the New Bethel Road, I understand that the idea is to do it in the two sections, because the low water bridge back there is not going to be, it's not going to be replaced. But looking at, I don't understand the mileage on it. It's got two, two mileages on the, on the first phase and two mileages on the second phase. You see what I'm talking about? Says one point nine three miles south, Route eleven and right under, it says two point eight three miles south.
That's a from and two.
That's what?
A from and two. That's the, that's the limits of the project, so.
Oh.
So we're going to pick up, if you leave Route eleven and go up a hill where the pavement ends, we will start there and do one project, and then we're going to the other end of, and come this way.
Okay, all right, so that's just a, a range?
Right, that's, that's where the project ends and begins, it's.
Okay, so both ends will?
Both ends are going to be paved.
Back toward the low water bridge will be.
Right. Hopefully, that'll get us by the majority, if not all, the residences on that road, so.
Anybody else have any other questions for?
What Joe was talking about in the Connors Valley, does that also apply to scratch gravel? Can it be put on six-year plan, it don't qualify as that?
Any, any project, any road in the county can be put out as a project. Any road you got. But the difference is, when we can do it rural rustically with state forces, you're looking at two hundred thousand dollars per mile. When it goes to construction, a conservative figure would be two million dollars per mile. That's, that's the difference, and that's why we strive for rural rustic, to get more bang for your buck. When it goes out to contract, you've automatically got preliminary engineering, they have to draw up a contract, have to do plans, they have to look at right of way, there's a whole lot more aspects involved, and therefore, the price increases as compared to rural rustics, where we can go out there minimal work to bring the road up to paving standards, we, we can go out, basically grade the road a little bit, add some gravel and pave it, and we don't have to have all the other aspects that a contractual project does. So any, any road can be added, but the price tag is going to increase that.
Yeah, I know you scratch gravel and several things that can hold it back from rural rustic.
I don't know the total mileages, I mean, not taking time to add it up, but right now, if you look at the total, we've got four million dollars. So essentially, if we went through contract, you'd be looking at a mile and a half to two miles of road, as compared to the mileages that we've got.
Full rustic?
Rural rustic, probably ten times as many miles, so without going through and adding.
Yeah, several inches, probably two miles. That piece of territory was about a mile.
If there's two miles on it, I would say that would pretty well exhaust the six million, four to six million, so.
Any other board member have any questions? Mr. Russell, before we go into public comment period. Thank you, Mr. Russell. Now, I'm going to open up the public comment period. Mr. Willis will be calling your names. Individual has three minutes. If you're talking for a group of people, you'll have five minutes. And Mr. Willis, you called first person, please give your name and address, please.
And if I butcher your name, I apologize upfront. Mr. Ray Miller.
Come on up, Mr. Miller. Good evening, and please state your name and address before we please.
My name is Alvin Ray Miller, and it's, I'm interested in talking about the road pass, my house, which is seven forty-eight Hogback Road.
Did you say Hogback Road?
Hogback Road, yeah. Route six six six, if you please. Okay, I heard Glade Road mentioned this evening, which I think is necessary to do something with as far as settling the dust. And also, on Hogback Road, I'm not sure how many houses are along Hogback from Route eleven to Blacklick Road. There's quite a few, and now recently, there's a trucking company moved in just beyond our house, and those semis going through there, it seems like they create ten times more dust. And so, I would like for that to be at least considered or put on a project list or, or something. And on the, on the way from, from my house to Route eleven, there's a, a very narrow space, the road gets very narrow, and it's curvy. And you meet a semi on the, in those curves, somebody has to get in the ditch. And there's also a school bus that uses that road. So maybe something to consider. I'd like for, for at least to be thought about, brought to your attention, and that's why I'm here this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, you know that Hogback's the rest of the section would qualify for rural rustic? It would? Next on the list, Michael Collins. Good evening, Mr. Collins.
My name's Michael Collins. I live on twenty-one thirty-nine Walton Furnace Road, and what I want to bring to your attention is, I've lived there for twenty-five years, and four years ago, they moved in a, a land bottom, they bought the farm beside me, and they put a big pumpkin building below me, and he's got all the farm rent around there, so for about eight weeks out of the year, you can't even see my house for the dust. Last year, we rough counted four hundred tractor-trailers coming, coming out of dirt road. Takes four trucks to fill a tractor-trailer. So they're coming off of Weaver's Farm, three or four farms coming out of Ivanhoe, the farm beside me. So you're looking at somewhere around fifteen, sixteen hundred trucks, small trucks hauls twelve pallets to a truck. So that's nonstop, daylight to dark. I take a five-gallon bucket every day, dump water across my wife's windshield, across mine every morning, so we can go to work, come back out the next morning. I just had the house remodeled, you can't tell what color the roof is, you can't tell what color the trees are, and I would just like to see it upgraded some. I've had it sprayed twice. I called Richmond, called Salem, spray it two days, you're back to the dust cloud. There's no holding it up. Like I said, they've got a job to do, and they've got to make a living too, but I would like to see it taken care of. The cattle guards just beyond my house, I'm just inside the cattle guards, it's the last two cattle guards on that road. I don't think it's going to affect the speed, because nobody seems to know that that's a dirt road, because it's, it's used as interstate, it's a crossover, so they don't have to come through Fort Chisel.
And how far is your house from the first cattle guard that you come to?
Hundred and ten yards.
Hundred and ten yards.
Hundred and ten yards is the first cattle guard, and then it's a tenth to the paved road, and.
Who has the cattle that?
Tommy Stone owns the cattle and the farm. My understanding, him and Bottomy are in, in talks about buying the farm, I don't know how that's when, so it would probably help me if it did, but.
Do you think he's willing to fence down to your house?
Well, I offered to do it, and, but I haven't heard him in the background. I offered him, I told him, I said, "I'll pay for the fence if you, if you'll okay for the state to move the cattle guard below my house." I said, "I'll build a fence. I'll pay for it, or I'll build it, however you want to do it."
Now, is there a cattle guard beyond your house?
One more, that's the last two on the road. Bland has bought everything, Mr. Bottomy's bought everything below it. Right, it used to. Right, used to be five on there, but he's bought everything from Tommy Stone's lower end all the way to where it hits 619 at Austinville. So, it's, like I said, it's, it's really, it become the last four years. I've, I've lived down there for, like I said, 25 years, and I like the rural rustic setting of being out there. And I don't really mind the dirt road at times. But from about middle of September to the first of November, there's no relief. There's none. From daylight, 11, 12 o'clock at night, they're picking pumpkins. If they're not picking pumpkins, there's 18, 20 tractor-trailers sitting in a load on the road, on dirt road, and you have to go up a bank to go around them, just to... He actually went and had the road widened with his own money, so he could park the tractor-trailers out of the road, to keep the state road open. So, that's, that's what I'm looking at. So, if you could be done, I sure would appreciate it. My wife would really surely appreciate it.
For us to consider, we will have to have some cooperation from the landowners, you know, as far as the fence and moving the cattle guard.
I'd be glad to happen.
After going away with it completely.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have no cattle. I mean, I've got a few goats and a few horses on my side of the fence, but I've got, got it fenced, but there's no fence on his side from the cattle guard down past my house. But I have offered. I made him offer. I said, "I'll build it all, it won't cost you a dime, and we'll move the cattle guard." But I haven't heard nothing back from him. So, I don't know if they're still trying to sell it or trying to...
If you can get with him, and you get that accomplished, and you get that accomplished, accomplish the prayer, we'll, we'll consider.
He has, he has trouble with cattle guard, the bush and gravel, you know?
Oh, yeah. The cattle guards, cattle stay out. They stay in my barnlot, or they stay in the pumpkin patch. It's one or the other. It's always something down there, so...
Yeah.
But it's constantly something, so... But I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Next up, Christine Umberger.
Morning, Ms. Umberger. May good evening, Ms. Umberger. Good seeing you.
It's good to see you. Christine Umberger, 634 Hogback Road with Bill. I'm speaking today on behalf of the, some of the people on Glade and Hogback Road. In front of my house, well, to start with, my husband and I moved to Hogback in the '70s, and in the '70s, there was four houses or five houses up there. Today, we have at least 16-plus houses. The farmland was sold, and housing developments were built. And we're not against that, but we do need some road improvements. Part of the road has been paved, but in my, front of my house, there's 3/10 of a mile on Glade Road that still needs some kind of pavement. If we could get in the rustic road, that would be great. That would be wonderful, or whatever. But also, on Hogback, from where the Glade hooks on to Hogback, that's also in front of my house, Hogback has approximately 1 and 1/2 miles till it hits the Blacklick Road. And I don't know whether that would be considered rustic or not. You can tell.
Mr. Russell informed us that it would qualify for rural rustic.
Oh, really? But I'm, I'm just concerned, we're, we're mainly concerned, the traffic is horrendous up there now. We have a lot of the, the trucking companies, as Mr. Miller has stated, we have a trucking company that's running the semis through there. The road is not wide enough for them to start with, but they're coming from one side of Blacklick Road until, I don't know where they're heading with their logs. And I personally got on, I met one of them on the road before you get to the Blacklick Road, and I stopped my car, and the truck barely could get past me. And he can't, they can't stop, because they're loaded, you know, very much. And so, I'm concerned about the dust, the potholes, the washboard roads. It's just unreal. They, I'm not condemning the State Department. They come and they do their paving, I mean, their grading, and their rocks on the road, and I'm not condemning them. But you can come one day, and the next day or two, you've still got your potholes, your ruts, your washboard, and the dust. And we desperately need some help up there, getting some of that done on that, it's actually less than two miles of road.
There's a lot of cars, the, the trucking, they have...
It's right be, it's right behind my house.
Fred Cox's property.
The Fred Cox's property. They sold it to a, a company, well, a family, I was presuming, it's got a company in it too, that's out of Pennsylvania. And my understanding is they're going, well, they're building, I think, a big house up behind my house on the next hill over there. But, and, but the, the trucks are there all the time, and it's right at the road as you're coming across Hogback. It's in a curve, right there where you start my line, right there in that curve. And it's, it's just unreal. I mean, the dust is horrible. You can ask Mr. Miller. And then, of course, the, when we have rain, in which we've had, thank God for the rain, don't get me wrong, but we have the potholes, the water doesn't run down the, the drain, the ditch lines, and when it doesn't run down the ditch lines, then you've got those big ruts in the road. You try, I mean, it's hard to travel. But we desperately need some help. And I think that would cut down on the expense of, of the state in having to run your motor grader out there and motor grade that road at least four to more times a year, and haul gravel on that's washed back off in the ditch, and there you go. But we need some help. Please, we need help.
Consider it, Ms. Umberger.
Thank you. If we could be on that rustic road, though, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roy Cox.
Good evening, Mr. Cox.
Good evening. My name's Roy Cox. I live on Pope Road 1262. I've been here quite a few times about this, and the road, like I say, is blacktopped on both ends. We're in the middle. And I can sympathize with the two people who just got up with the dust and the potholes and washboards. But I know we're on a six-year plan, but I'd just like to know where we're at, because a lot of people says, "You ain't going to get that paved in your lifetime," but I don't believe that. I believe Mr. Hale will take care of that. But he did come up with a bridge, you know? We took a double hit with the bridge gone, so we've got to go three to seven miles out of the way to get out of there. And today, this is the third time I've been to towns. I know it's a low-traffic road, but seem to me, I have to keep it hot.
I want to ask Mr. Russell, he said, "When is it fully funded, Pope Road?"
As I asked, it's, it'll be fully funded July 2021.
July 2021, yeah. I hope to live that long, anyway.
But you can get your starting in 2020, or...
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Now, that, that, too, I'm going to have to disclaimer, these allocations can go both ways. We may come back next year and say they took the money away from us, so...
Don't want to hear that.
Nothing is guaranteed, except the funding of this year. We're guaranteed this year's column of funding, everything else is projected.
Then you'll have to make a law and proof to Richmond, right?
Right. But on the other hand, Mr. Hale had an ideal about putting cupboards in there, so we get in and out before we can get the bridge. But then Mr. Russell said that was shot down through environmental people, wouldn't allow that. But I'm yet to understand what that would pollute the creek, because cupboards run into it off the road all the time.
Well, God has made this, it's white and deep, huge reason for much of anything, so, you know, they're a monster to deal with.
And then this big rain before last hit, washed my road out bad. I couldn't hardly get out of the driveway. And VDOT come in there, and they fixed it. But they done a good job fixing the road down in front of the house. But they took about a dump load of stuff out of them cupboards there and on the side. And I was thinking, maybe you ought to put some kind of guard in there to catch that debris before it stops up the pipes, or you just take your tractor or something, just pick it up and dump it. I don't know what they, we allowed to do that or not.
I don't think you'd have to talk to Mr. Russell.
Mr. Russell.
On that.
That's an ideal, Lou. You can sort of study about that. But these other cupboards are too, is about stopped up, so... Anyway, that's about all I can say. Just sit back and hope.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
You're welcome.
Mr. Paul Matthews.
Good evening, Mr. Matthews.
Good evening. My name's Paul Matthews. I live on Pope Road. And my concern tonight, when you leave Powdermill Road, going on Pope Road, before you get to the grade up around, it's a culvert there. They grade the ditch line into it, but it's stopped up, it don't drain nothing. Road floods there when it rains. Going up the grade, the road is barely wide enough for two vehicles to pass slow. If you get off the surface, you in a ditch about this deep. If you have a car, you on the bottom. Why can't we get something done about filling them ditches with coarse rock to have a shoulder on that road? I met a school bus on the turn up the grade a Friday evening, and we almost had a collision because it's so narrow. But that road, you, you can't pass, going down that grade, you cannot pass a vehicle at any speed, because you, you ain't got nowhere to go. You can't get off the har, I mean, the, the surface of the road, because you in a ditch. And it's been several cars had to be towed out of the ditches, because he got over too far and got in the ditch. And going down the grade from the top of the hill towards Gowan Lane, it's a drain pipe there that ain't been cleaned out well, it ain't drained nothing for the last five, six, seven years. They run the ditch into the end of it, but it's full of dirt and rocks, and it's done, done no good, and then the water just worsens on down the hill and cross the road and everything else. So, we need to get something done about them drain pipes. If we ain't going to use them, why even be in there?
I see Mr. Russell's taking a few notes. I'm sure he'll be out there, have somebody out there checking, checking the cupboards that are stopped up, he'll get that clean.
Well, we mentioned to him here about four or five years ago, the one from Gowan Lane up the grade there, oh, we got a system that we can flush that pipe right out. That's five years ago. Guess what? The pipe is still stopped up. The system ain't got to flush that. And we need them, we need a curve on that hill. We need gravel in that ditch line. It's places, the ditch is that deep, and you get off the har, or the surface of the road, the cars on the bottom. I, I believe it bottomed out on the school bus we got off. And we need something done about that hill. And also, we need to possible keep gravel on that road to keep us out of the mud. And appreciate if you could get something done about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll talk to Mr. Russell about that.
Last person signed up says they're representative from state Route 666, New Bethel Road.
Good evening. My name is Alice Scrub, and I live at 868 New Bethel Road. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you for clarifying tonight that we are on a six-year plan. Dr. Hausman asked a question we had about bridge to br, from the bridge to the road, and that was clarified. But we do have a couple other questions. What year can we expect our road to be taken care of? I'm talking about New Bethel.
The proportion on the Route 11 end, it's supposed to be fully funded this year.
Woo-hoo. That's my end, okay? And what about the other end?
It's supposed to be fully funded this year also.
So, we can expect to have our road taken care of in 2017, from what you're saying right now?
We've hoped to.
Okay, well...
We've got projects in front of yours. Right now, we're working on Myrtle Lane. I think we're finishing up Craigor Drive. We've got two sections of Sharon Drive, and we're kind of taking in this power.
Well, we've waited 60 years, so...
You'll be all right.
We'll wait till the end of this year, and if we don't have it at the end of this year, we'll be back. So, we, we can rest assured that we're on the plan, and our road's going to be taken care of. All right. I'm going to hold you to that, sir. I appreciate y'all, thank you very much. I think people that are with me, y'all have any other thing you want me to ask? We have a lot of representatives on our road here tonight, and if they don't live on our road, they go to church on our road. So, we're going to hold you to it, thank you very much, and we look forward to having a road paved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. That's everyone that's signed up. Would anybody else would like to speak, concerned with six-year road plan? Sir, come on up. State your name and address, please.
Evening, gentlemen. My name is Ben Bobala. I live at 611 Scratch Gravel Road. Max Meadows, I was here just past summer, and Mr. Russell was here and talked about the possibility of doing scratch gravel. He said he had looked at it. It is 1.7 miles, but I'm hearing tonight car traffic and things like that. Is there other things that would keep scratch gravel from being put on a rural rustic list?
Right now, the, the roadway surface is 13 to 14 feet. It does have a high traffic here.
Good.
The problem is, there's a lot of steep slopes on both sides.
Yes, there are. Yes, there are, and there's a lot of washboard on it.
To be a rural rustic road, we have to be able to build that roadway, including the slopes within the prescribed length, which is normally 30 feet. So, for us to widen that road out from a 13-foot road to a 16-foot road with two foot of shoulder on both sides, and then get the slopes, we're going to be outside of that 30-foot, easy foot range, kicks it out of a rural rustic camp. So, it does, it's not a rural rustic camp, because of that.
Okay. So, I guess the next question is, I mean, I hear a lot of stories here tonight, okay? And I appreciate everything these people have to say. Basically, we have the same problem. If it rains hard, state has to come out, grade it, rock it. And they come out, probably, I've had them out three or four times. It seems like the state is spending more money, coming out and rocking it, grading it, if they grade it properly. Sometimes they have to come back and grade it the second time, because they don't get the washboard out, for whatever reason. And over the years, it would seem, all of these roads, if they could be put on a plan, so the people know something's going to happen, in the long run, the state would save the money. I think everybody agrees that. The problem is, how do you do it?
We try to, you know, they give us the amount of money that we have to do this, and that's, we try to limit to that, you know, pay for the road that's on the six-year plan. If we put more than we got money, I mean, they're, they're not going to get funded.
Can I, can I put shock absorbers and a front-end alignment on, on your budget, so every year I can get one of those?
Not our county's budget. We, the, the county, you know, work with the, with the VDOT, but VDOT has the responsibility of, of road maintenance and, and road construction. It just, we come with a six-year secondary plan to, to try and get some of the gravel roads and other roads improved in the county.
So, then the question is, is what is the process that could maybe, somewhere down the line, get scratch gravel on this?
Well, this, this is the process. You come, we have this meeting every year, and to talk about the six-year road plan, and how much money we have, and how much, how much roads we can have. we can add.
Okay. So we just have to-
If some of these on the six-year plan gets done, we'll be adding more roads to the six-year plan.
Okay. Well, I was here the last time, the other gentleman's here, so talking, and he's got a worse problem than we do, so. All right, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming. Does anyone else would like to speak?
I've got a hand up.
I would like to know, is there any chance that we're gonna be put on a, a plan? My understanding is, several years ago, that we got put on the rustic road for the little dab of glade road. And for some reason, we never did get it done. Do you know if we were put on it or not?
I know, I know. It hasn't been on the six-year plan since 2009, I don't recall anything of that.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I was, I was told several years ago that it was put on the rustic road, that three tenths of a mile right on the glade road that runs into the hogback road.
It very well could be, but that don't mean it's gonna be on the six-year plan. That's, that's the process we're doing now. Even though it's, if it was declared, if the county board did a resolution at that time, as a rural rustic, doesn't necessarily put it on the six-year project.
Oh, it did.
That's what we're looking at now, is road to add to the project list.
I am, I mean, we're desperate up there on that road. There's just, there's two little sections of road, the three tenths on the glade, and then there's about a mile and a half on the hogback. And we desperately need that road, something put done about it. There's added, the people are moving in up there, they're building up there, and then people travel it all the time, and then this trucking company, and we don't know what's gonna happen there, and we just desperately need some help. So please, help us. And I'm out looking at you.
I'll do what I can, Ms. Humbert. Okay, is anybody, yes, sir, come on up. State your name and address, please.
Dollar Bowlin, 973 Grouse Ridge Road. How you doing, Mr. Hale?
How are you?
Good. You know, you know us well, don't you, Grouse Ridge Road? We were here tonight to get some explanation. We should've been on the six-year plan on Grouse Ridge Road, according to our petition we signed with you.
No, sir, you got right.
Can you explain some of that to us, number one?
Go ahead.
It takes some history. I've met with you folks quite a bit. We got money appropriated for a revenue sharing program, and that fell through. Y'all got a right-of-way problem that VDOT can't solve.
Was it the right-of-way that, that you went back six deeds to get us over to Gunton Park? Is that what we're talking about?
No.
Or is it where we're landlocked?
That's right. That's, you're landlocked because you don't have a right-of-way. What we were trying to do at Gunton Park was to get you some way into the division, multiple subdivisions, by the way. That would've let VDOT come in from that side and develop the system. And y'all had a very small park to maintain yourselves where you don't have a right-of-way.
We all agreed, we all agreed to that, didn't we?
Well, nobody showed up with any signatures or help with the funding.
Didn't we all sign it to you? We signed them all with you, and then we understood from you that our money went to the Expo Center?
No, 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 you didn't understand that from me, you might've heard that.
I think we did.
No, I, I don't think so.
You took our signature, but the Quanis Club meeting.
That's right, every one of them.
Whoa, whoa!
We'll have one person speaking at a time.
That's what I'm here to do, is to try to speak for us, but I think Mr. Hale could speak for us a little bit too here. We've had several situations since then with the school bus coming in there, and you know, we've had a very serious house fire up there on that mountain this past summer.
Yep.
And Mr. Rick Skeen from the superintendent board called me while I was in Christiansburg to ask what to do with kids, where to drop them out, because we got one way in there and one way out, and it's a very serious situation. It's not something that needs to be overlooked. And from what I understand, the right-of-way, from what I've heard now, you, you can help us here, that there was one man over at Gunton Park that stopped it. And is that true or not?
No, there were three people showed up here at a public meeting.
From Gunton Park?
From Gunton Park. The county attorney looked into it, we have record of that, and he determined that those right-of-ways weren't valid. Mr. Russell knows that. Those right-of-ways are called out, any deeds, and it was three folks that didn't want it to happen. There were the three that recorded in here.
So we were just forgot again?
Well, without a right-of-way, you can't invest the state's money, you don't have a right-of-way.
So, so in that case, how could the county give us deeds to property up there and, and give us right-of-way to 610 that never belonged?
All right. Let's answer the questions.
We are landlocked. From every one of you, they, they give us their deeds. We pay as much taxes there that you people got sidewalks off. We would like to have a school bus pick our kids up in front of our school, uh, houses, and not have to worry if they're trapped four miles from our house. Now, we put men on the moon. I, my heart goes to these people with dust and potholes that we've sat here and listened to. If they go, they return around before, and you know it. So we're very-
Let's separate-
Anyone homes up in there without-
Let Mr. Hale answer your question.
The first thing, let's deal with one issue at a time. You homogenize or made soup out of four different stories here. The first thing, that meeting we had was an informational meeting, it wasn't at the Quanis Club, 'cause there's not one, it was at the Rookin Club.
The Rookin Club, that's correct.
You folks showed up, I remember everyone-
That's right, we signed a petition.
A petition to get the road. You did not-
For that plan.
You, you did not sign anything about signing up to pay your part of it.
It was bringing in two, and then the next plan-
He said there were phases.
There were phases of it.
Phase one, let me explain. If you want explanation, I-
We do.
Have worked on this for five years to no avail. I take more abuse over that thousand acres there than everything else in the district. You got one person that calls me, he's got me on speed dial, and y'all know who he is, but I get trips and everything, no.
I called you about the situation with the school board. The school system up there is very concerned, they have-
Well, well, let's deal with those one at a time now. The history is that this thing happened, Hal is the oldest deed y'all got up there. Twenty, 25, 30 years ago, this thing happened.
Exactly.
I admit, I've admitted to y'all, the county made mistakes back then. They had no ordinances, they had no planning commission. I feel morally responsible that that happened, but that don't fix it. There's two ways to get a road out of there, and we've discussed them. One of them, they tried and got Mr. Russell to get some money to do it. If we could've come up with that other half, which didn't happen, and we turned that money back, Jeff, because it wasn't used.
Wait, you turned our money back where?
No, it wasn't your money, 'cause you didn't come up with any.
But that's what we signed?
No, you didn't sign anything. Y'all signed a petition to get, you signed a petition to get it moving. Not one of you ever signed a permission to raise your taxes.
Yes, we did.
Nope. If not with me, you didn't.
With 50 cents a hundred, yes, sir.
Yeah, you gave us the amount and-
Stephen, you check, was it 50 cents a hundred?
I, I would have to check.
Yeah. What was it, Mr. Burches?
Let her come up too, if she's gonna answer. Do you, we told you the rules. You had to have over 50% of the land, which you had because of Jason's big chunks. And the other one is, you had to have 50% in it, Stephen, of the people that agree to pay. And you didn't have that.
Yes, we did, we had a petition.
Yeah, we had a petition. Well, I, I expect that you can reproduce it then, can't you?
Uh, no, 'cause we turned it into our lovely representative from the county.
Well, I don't remember that happening. I don't think you had the 51%. It never got here.
We had way over that.
Well, where, where did y'all do, where, where did you do this signing?
We did the signing down at the Rookin Club. And you remember being there, 'cause you just talked about it.
Right.
Right.
But nobody signed-
Yes, we did. We all signed a paper saying that we would raise our taxes.
We, we signed a petition.
You signed a petition. Stephen, you know the different agreement that we're talking about. We never had a signing of agreement of the 51% of the landowners to raise the taxes on the road would've been done.
You did bring up the plan, that it was gonna have to come in phases. You did bring up the percentage of taxes that it was gonna raise our taxes, that it was gonna cost a 50 cent a hundred.
We did.
And then we signed.
The petition.
You signed-
And then, we waited on a response from you, we never got.
Y'all have an association up there.
We have a road association.
No, I never promised you anything at the election.
Yes, you did.
I told you, I'm doing everything I can do, and you don't have a right-of-way. If we can get a right-of-way, you will get a road eventually. But it's still gonna come in phases. What's your address on Grouse Ridge?
973 Grouse Ridge Road. I'm right by Jason Short on Grouse Ridge Road. Everyone was here on Grouse Ridge Road, I believe. Everyone was here-
Sir, I have a big question for you. I have lived on this road for 21 years coming August. I purchased this property July the 26th of 1996. Two years after I purchased this property, there was another subdivision developed as a, as a right-of-way only off of Grouse Ridge to Deerwood Heights. Under the assumption that with county approved, another exit out coming off of Deerwood Heights, it's approved.
This is true.
Okay, ma'am, could you kind of give your name and address? Let me, let me say one thing right now, and we don't wanna get all out of whack here. You know, none of us was on the board in 1996.
And we understand it.
Yes, sir, we do understand that.
And I want you to understand that. I know Mr. Hale has worked hard, but there's certain things that has to be done before this process can move forward.
Mr. Humbert, Charlie? Okay, so I have a que- my name is Sherry Harris, I live at 884 Grouse Ridge Road in Max Meadows, Virginia. I have a question for each and every one of you all sitting here tonight. We as citizens, we work every day. I go out of there every day. I've raised three children in that subdivision, and I haul them to school every day with my tax money paying for a bus to be delivered. We need you all's help. Point blank, I don't care who. Which one of you all help us? If it's you, 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 we need help out of there.
It takes the rescue squad 30 minutes to come up there, just on that road.
Everybody come, one at a time, speak.
But we've had, not just Mr. Joe Hale, we've had Lisa Eaton-
Yes.
-come to our subdivision, promising us that that six-year committee we would be on that. Not only her, she got voted out, moved on. Ms. Maggie Poole come to our subdivision, promised us, put us on the committee, we on the six-year plan. Sir, we've never been on it.
Hold on one second. You can't be put on the six-year plan because it's not a state-maintained road.
Yet.
Well-
It has to be brought up.
The only thing that's ever been told to us is the county took it over, with county took it over. And it's never been done.
There's also a problem that needs to be brought to your attention too, along, Sherry's correct with everything she says, when she mentioned the school bus, and Mr. Hale, I've had to call him on this, and we've had to deal with superintendent. When that school bus comes off the state-maintained road, in there, they come into su- uh, the subdivision, that bus has to turn around three or four times to turn around and unload the kids in danger, open the doors, in the traffic that comes off your state road into there, in danger. Haven't we discussed it?
Yeah, let's talk about that.
And this is very dangerous, there's more reasons-
You're gonna have to give us a chance for Mr. Hale to answer some of your questions. You can't just keep talking.
You called me that morning about the school bus.
And took pictures.
And within, within minutes, I had the superintendent's office, got him, he told me he would ride the bus. That's morning you called me, that was real foggy, and the school bus had backed out across Pepper Street Road because the guy didn't know how to turn around.
No, no, inside on Grouse Ridge Road, they come inside Grouse Ridge Road.
Okay, so you didn't call me about that traffic violation there, stop sign.
No, that's a difficult.
All right, the coming in there, you still got the same problem.
We do.
You got the landowner there, happens to be Mr. Milgram, who owns both sides of the road, and this Jeff, I see you back, you're back there. That, that, that was handled under a contract. And Milgram was promised when they got, if he let them use that, this is verbal, if they use that to build a new bridge, that they could develop that for a parking space. And the Rookin Club actually offered to build a shelter out there for the kids to stay in while they waiting on the bus. Milgram won't let that happen now because he didn't get what he wanted out of that turnaround place.
We've done that for 25 years.
We do need a turnaround place there for the bus, it's not safe. And they have to leave public right-of-way to get on the private property to turn around.
We have a 50-foot right-of-way that's-
Okay, I'm on, I'm on settle this right now. If y'all, sure, y'all got 50% of the people that will go along with the taxing-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Sir, we, and just Grouse Ridge Road connecting to Deerwood Heights, which has became the whole subdivision, that whole area now. There is 65 homes in there.
Let me speak, ma'am.
Yes.
First of all, the right-of-way issue going into that property has to be somehow settled before anything can be done.
We're asking for that help.
Does that mean we need to go sue Jim Dixon?
No.
'Cause we're landlocked?
We don't wanna go to Jim Dixon because the county let Jim Dixon do it.
Yeah, but if you're landlocked and he sold you that property, you have the right.
That's just the law, yes, it is. We've, we've done our homework on it, but there is three different subdivisions you have.
Y'all have a, a group of people that, okay, can y'all pick a couple of people out as, as far as leaders of your group, come and talk with Mr. Burr, where he can, where he can tell you the process of how this has got to be done, the roads got to be built to get into the state road system, or the specification of how it has to be built. And we can go through that process, but, and everybody understands, you know, that the taxes are being raised to pay for that, to put it into the state road system.
We do understand that.
But first of all, we've got to do some research on what we can do there off of Pepper Street Road coming, coming into that, to correct that right-of-way problem. That's the first step, is we got to figure out, you know, somebody's got to figure out how to, to correct that problem of the right-of-way going in there.
That's where we went, the right-of-way that Mr. Hale said he found, and it's there, he even shows it on GPS.
Yeah, but I remember the meeting that night, and the three people that come here and spoke against it, did, did not want the right-of-way-
To come into Gunton Park.
To come through that.
What was the reason, Mr. Hale?
It was split their farm.
Because what I understood, they went four deeds back, 1936 and-
In the 20s or something.
I don't know about four, but we went multiple deeds back in the clerk's office. The deeds are actually shown, and Stephen's seen them. They call it out in their deeds. The county attorney at VDOT's request said they weren't valid for a public road, I think. Is that right, Stephen?
That, correct, yes.
So the county would have to validate and fight it through court, which we brought back to this body, and this body decided not to do it. I didn't. But if y'all need to blame somebody, have at it. I, I can take it.
We're not blaming, we wanted some answers what was going on.
But we're gonna have to, if y'all get a group, some leaders, a couple leaders to come to Mr. Burr.
But, but while, but while we got this refreshed on all of yours, can I bring up two other situations, serious, that we have up there, just like these people did? Number one is EMS, getting up to our homes, EMS, fire, and law enforcement.
Well, you know, until the road is brought up to state standards where it can be taken into the, the VDOT system, you know, you know, as far as, you know, our tax money, you know, can't be put towards that, the state can't put it in towards unless it's, lots of words, sharing.
Revenue sharing.
Revenue sharing, and that's where VDOT approves to put so much money up, and then that's where citizens have to put the money up to get, to get the road built, to get it put into the state's system. But like I said, that right-of-way problem, our going into it's got to be solved first. And if y'all will, you know, you can come up tomorrow and talk to Mr. Burr, or call and get an appointment, and we'll start this process and see what we can do.
So the right-of-way coming in off 610, which we have the problem with the gas line and the railroad, right, Mr. Hale?
Yeah, really, you know the situation. There's about 300 feet there that y'all don't have a legal right-of-way. Everything else could work. Now, one of the things, just wait a minute. One of the things that you got, and you might as well notice up front, whoever the developer was, allowed a lot of utility poles to be set in y'all's- allowed a lot of utility poles to be set in y'all's right of way. BDOT's not going to take that over and build a road if there's a utility pole in the right of way. That's another problem you don't know you got. All that utility was put in harem scamum for whatever was good for the power company, and totally ignored the right of way. I've studied every inch of that thing trying to get a way out of there. And if you talk to Stephen, I'll talk to him, there's one other way out of there. Whoever said you can take it over Little Brushy Mountain into Millers Creek hadn't looked at the north side of that mountain. That's going to happen three days after never. It's one step off, and you're dropping eight feet going off the north side of that mountain. Y'all live on the good side of the mountain. The backside is still all private land over there. There's no national forest land. You're not going to get on it. There's an old wagon road that goes over there. But it's on national forest land, and you're not going to get a road through there. So it's all private land on the other side of that mountain, and it's so steep you can't get a road off there. So Millers Creek could be great if you could get there, but there's no gap in the mountain. There's no way to get off that north side. The power company couldn't even get a pa- power line off that north side.
We're hoping that you, uh, we know BDOT works with the gas company, BDOT works with the railroad and water lines every day, so we're hoping that you all can get something worked out to get us a right of way in there.
Everything we need to check on it to see if we can get the right of way problem solved.
Yeah.
Thankfully, the rescue squad and the fire department makes ever effort to service that area.
They do.
It's not easy. You can't take a truck or an ambulance in there at any speed at all.
We just refused nursing care until some, some of the neighbors got together and traveled the whole. To get up to my mother that recently passed away, they couldn't, nurses couldn't even get up in there. It's just, it's a tunnel.
We got hot holes that deep.
And our taxes are just as high as you all pay right here. It's got sidewalks, and so we need help.
And I know.
If we have to pay.
I'm sorry that subdivision was built like that. And like I said, none of us was on the board, and, and the rules wasn't in place that previous boards had studied and placed.
That's why we're here to.
To keep from this problem ever happening.
Keep it fresh in your old mind and to get the help.
But I know Mr. Hale has tried a lot, you know, to try to get this problem fixed, and I'm glad you're, y'all are here tonight, and we'll do everything we can do. We'll have Mr. Burr and Mr. Russell. Would you help us check into the, the right of way situation there? And see what, what has to be, what we have to go through to get the right of way situation taken care of. And then we can go through the process of revenue sharing and goss taxes going up to pay for goss part of having a road put through there. Yes, ma'am?
I do know that in the state of Virginia, that if you use a right of way or an easement like we do through there, that we don't, we're not allowed to. If you use it openly um, for a period of time, twenty-five years or so, like they've been there, and you, you haven't had anybody tell you that you can't, or they don't put up a stents at least one day a year or something and stop you, kind of have a right of way through there.
Check in all of those, those things, but dealing with the railroad and the gas companies, it's an uphill battle as it is to still, but hopefully we can find a, a, a solution to get a right of way in there. Then we'll go through this process of revenue sharing and, and keep y'all informed.
True.
Really, y'all, y'all need to get your group together, get you a couple of people to speak for you, and, uh, for, you know, that can meet with Mr. Burr, and we'll have meetings to explain exactly what's going on when we get to that point. But we got to get to that point first and settle, you know, the problem with the right of way.
To, to, to the county now, if a developer was wanting to come in and put in a subdivision, what is your?
Protocol.
Pro- protocol on, is it number one, certified, to make sure it's a fifty-foot right of way?
Uh, subdivisions now require the creation of the state-maintained road.
See, we, we've been, we've been here.
The right ways like what you're.
Within twenty years, we've been here several times, not only myself but other people, and they throw clauses at us, clauses, clauses, and we met them clauses. And when we met Mr. Hale, the last clause that I was told, "Mr. Bowlin, you find a right of way in there, we'll put you a road in there." Well, Mr. Hale, and all of us did. So I don't understand, I, I, on the other end, there's got to be somebody over there.
If you all give me a call, I'll be glad to meet with you, and we'll, we'll sit down and we'll look at options and, and move this forward as best we can.
But like I said, we got to figure out how to solve, solve the right of way problem.
See, there's also issues when we get, uh, property resurfaced, that we've got a five-acre deed to. When the time comes that the survey comes out, surveys this property, the home developer is losing how much land by going by the plot maps because the road is actually is where the land is being set, and that's our five-acre lines.
Every one of our deeds are recorded in the county.
The road is on that five-acre line.
Says we have a right of way to Route six-ten.
Oh, on the left side of the road, not on the right side of the road.
It's not there. We have ten feet. That's the problem that they're talking about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Our deeds are just bogus.
How many people ride the bus?
Eighty with Medeville One, Medeville Two, and Deerwood Heights.
Yes, sir. They probably approximately have twenty-five to thirty children that get off the bus daily there.
Yeah.
And they got, some of them got to walk down in the snow, rain, it don't matter. Them kids have got to walk.
Okay. Like I said, we'll do everything we can to help. I promise that. And, uh, you know, we'll try to get the right of way situation, see what we have to do, and we'll keep y'all informed. And like I said, you know, get your, your group together, get you a couple of people that can come and speak with Mr. Burr and, uh, start the, start the process.
Really?
Okay.
Thank you all for listening. We appreciate all y'all's time very much. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Reese, ma'am, one more question?
Yes, sir.
Of Mr. Russell?
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Is it, is it possible, because it doesn't look like this road is going to be fixed in my lifetime, maybe it won't be, but is it possible that when they come with the grader, that they can grade it to get rid of the washed border? From, it's like address three-hundred to address five-hundred, it comes around a curve. It's, it's a almost horseshoe coming around it up. If they could just grade that down, the flat road, waste some money, put a rock on it, because after a couple of days, the rock's all gone, and it's back, you know, washboard.
This is the parlor steep grade that you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It goes up, and it goes around, it goes right, left, and right. It's an S.
I'll bring it to their attention. They try to cut the washboard, that's the problem is.
I would ask for everyone to please be quiet while the people are speaking.
That's one thing. The moisture keeps your fines and your, and your aggregate bonded, so that's why we don't do it while it's dry. We like to do it when there's moisture. But at the same time, if we grade it, we don't really have a way to pack it, and then vehicles on the steep grades, they go to bouncing, and the next one bounces a little more, and that's what creates. But I'll certainly bring it to their attention and try to take a look at it.
So as they sit here, we're being caught between rock and hard spot?
Their road on a steep hill.
Okay, but appreciate anything you can do. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, I'm going to close the public hearing on the six-year road plan. Court. Okay, moving right on into our agenda, under our own business. Mr. Burr, do we have anything on our own business?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have anything on our own business.
Okay, uh, new business economic development committee report. Okay, before we, well, while everybody's clearing out, we will be, uh, take a recess for about five minutes. Back toward for recess.
Should I wait that minute?
Yes.
Economic Development Committee.
Yeah. Let me get my computer pulled back up here while I can see. Okay, uh, we're going to new business economic development committee report.
May fourth, the economic development committee met and recommends holding a public hearing to adopt an ordinance providing a partial tax exemption to certain rehabilitated commercial and industrial properties.
Okay, uh, well, come from committee, uh, this is a recommendation. Has everybody, you emailed to, to everybody?
A copy of it is included in the board package here. I have a brief summary of it if you'd like, Mr. Chairman. Uh, basically what this is, is, um, property located within an enterprise zone uh, that the structure is more than forty years old. The individuals can apply to the commission of revenue prior to starting their, their work. And, um, basically, when the, uh, the work, the rehabilitation work is done, the increase in property value, um, that they receive as a result of rehab would not be taxed a hundred percent the first year, eighty percent the second year, sixty percent the third year. Just using example. If, if there's a hotel out there in the district, whether it's in town, whether it's out in the county, it's in the enterprise zone district business. If they're currently assessed at a million dollars, they're paying four thousand nine hundred dollars a year in property taxes. If they renovated the property and added a million dollars worth of renovations to it, their tax assessed value went from a million dollars to two million dollars. You would still be collecting the forty-nine hundred dollars the first year on your base of a million dollars. The million-dollar renovation that they did, you would be waiving a hundred percent of that tax the first year. The second year, you still collect forty-nine hundred on the, the base value. You would be collecting, uh, you would be waiving three thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, eighty percent of the forty-nine hundred dollars. And it would decrease over a five-year period. At the end of five years, then they would be paying full value assessed, tax value on the assessed value of their property.
Okay, does any board member have any questions on that?
That's, I, I understand this to encourage people. Is it, is it, uh, and maybe I didn't read it carefully enough, is it, uh, just rehab, is it, uh, is it new construction?
It, it deals with renovation, re- rehabilitation of structures.
Okay.
Um.
And just the park is re- uh, renovated?
You know, I'll give you a little background. Tommy Honey on the town council come to me and requested, you know, if the county could do something, you know, they've got the downtown project, Main Street, uh, going and revitalization. And, um, I've sent it to, uh, Mr. Burr, to send to the economic development committee for their consideration, and that's, this is the ordinance that's come out of, uh, Mr. Burr and the economic development committee as, as brought to the full board, which will have to set a public hearing, uh, on it, and, you know, it is an incentive. I mean, we give incentives to other companies and, and stuff, and, and if people are, you know, increasing the value of their property in town or out in the county or wherever, uh, it has to, it's in the enterprise zones, right?
Correct.
It's in the enterprise zones. You know, give them an incentive, you know, we give companies incentives, and, you know, it's, it's not a hundred percent, you know, incentive, you know, I think the town is, has it been given a hundred percent for five years?
I believe the town's a hundred percent for five.
Five years. You know, and this is something the county could, you know, partner with the town and, and try to help some of the, the businesses in town that they pay taxes and, that are, you know, are going through a, uh, renovation and fixing up their property on Main Street, and not, and in any enterprise zone. And, uh, hopefully we can stimulate some, uh, tax basing, increasing the tax basing in the county. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Okay, the grade expands. That's not eligible, please.
First of all, the structure's got to be more than forty years old then.
Okay.
So, uh, I'll use some examples that were sitting out there. Fort Chisel Mansion would be an example. Uh, it's been renovated already, so it is, it's not retroactive. Uh, but Flying Jake Truck Stop is, or out there's probably approaching thirty-some years in life. At forty-some years, if they decided to do a renovation, it would qualify. The enterprise zone stretches into downtown Whitfield area, so if there's, uh, something like where the pizza place is now, or something like that was being done, and that was in the enterprise zone, barely been there forty years, that would qualify. The, the bowling Wilson would have qualified under this, had that been done. None of this is retroactive, but those are the type of things that could qualify.
Okay, in, in the Oriente area, the enterprise zone includes that, were Chris manufacturing blocks?
Um, yes.
I can answer that, yes.
Okay.
All right, so I, I guess Chris may be the only, I'm not sure when that building was built, but it might, it might reach that forty-year period.
So that's.
Behind it, it's also one. Okay, so those are the only, basically the only two probably in that, in that enterprise zone right there, down around, uh, where Clockner and all those places are. Okay.
Clockner's probably approaching twenty-eight, twenty-nine years right now.
I was still principal when they came in, so I don't.
Um, Stephen, what do we have on, on the night meeting in, in June as far as public hearings? Or do we have anything?
There is a public hearing, a night meeting in June. Comment, I would recommend on it for the July night meeting, July eleventh.
Okay. Okay, uh, come from committee, does it need a second? So, uh, everybody in favor for setting a public hearing on ordinance? I don't have the ordinance number twenty-seventeen dash, it doesn't have any number behind the dash.
It was, it was probably going to be, have we adopted anything this year? I would just make it forward, this ordinance, the public here for this ordinance.
Uh, set for, uh, July the eleventh at seven oh five P.M. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Public hearing is set. Okay, is that everything from the economic development committee?
Yeah, just, um.
Moving on to appointments.
Have a few appointments out there. The first one is the Crossroads Regional Industrial Facility Authority. Dr. Housman's appointment does not expire until June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen, uh, so you've got a couple of meetings that you all can consider that. And appoint someone in that position. It does not need to be appointed tonight, and if you appoint someone, I would make it effective on July first.
Okay.
Second appointment is for the Workforce Development Area Consortium Board. We still have a vacant business representative. If anyone has any recommendations or names on that, uh, that one, it, it still needs to be filled. The ninth district development financing incorporated, Jennifer Atwell has been a previous representative on this. I have spoken with her. It primarily deals with funding and tourism-related activities, and she would be willing to serve again, if you all would like her to, to serve on that position. They have sent us a letter requesting that we fill that position.
Okay, I entertain the motion of, since Miss Atwell is willing to serve another two-year term, appoint her to the night district development financing incorporated board.
So moved.
I have a second.
Thanks.
I have a motion, a second, and a discussion. Here and none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Let's go appoint it.
The Renovation Commission has a vacancy in West Whitfield, and I'll ask Mr. Lester if he could be thinking about someone, unless you have someone there that, that may be interested in that.
I'll think of him.
Mr. Williams is trying to, um, get some meetings back scheduled with them. We also have a couple other individuals. My guess is their kids sort of aged out, and they may not be as involved with it, and, and they may submit some letter of resignation again, we may be looking at some of them. Right now, West Whitfield is the only one that, that we're looking at. The last one is Southwest Virginia Emergency Medical Services Council. And reviewing a list of who is, is on that, um, and that's the EMS council that we sometimes work to get some funding through. We've worked to organize a training with Mr. Greg Woods, it's with them. Other counties have had their emergency services coordinators appointed into that board, so, uh, Mr. Buzik will be one gentleman that you all would consider. So, uh, Mr. Music would be one gentleman that you all would consider. If you'd like to appoint him, it would help us in having someone attending those meetings and, and working on training opportunities.
Have you talked to him about serving?
I have talked with him about it.
He's put him to service for.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Still appointed. Okay, Mr. Byer, anything other, other, new business?
If you all will allow me to request, uh, Mr. Farley's upstairs video, and so he can't be down here, but he has prepared a letter. He is working with the Sheriff's Office of Whip County and Bland County for a grant for a radio communication project. And, uh, they're looking for loads of support. And, uh, I would request that you review. And, uh, if acceptable, um, I can motion to adopt this letter of support. The chairman can sign it to go with the grant application.
What size grants available?
I knew you were gonna ask that question, and I was looking to see if you put it on the letter. Um, it is a matching grant, and I'll see if quickly if I can find the information. And Jeremy may walk down here and give you the information before I find it. Um, the, um, he is working with Bland. There is a match on it that I've talked to the sheriff about. And he is planning on using, uh, funds under their domain, some asset forfeiture possibly, and some other funds for their matching funds to go with it.
Could, could this grant money be applied toward renovation at, uh, Hamilton's knob?
No, this is for radio equipment. There's the man that can answer the questions.
Oh, it has to be in the car?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Farley.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Um, Bland County Sheriff would be roughly about twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand. And the Whip County Sheriff's Office would get between one-twenty and one-thirty.
Say that again slower, please.
All right, yeah. And the grant, uh, yeah, the grant maximum amount is one-fifty. We're actually gonna be making application for one-forty-nine because, uh, you're gonna get graded on a better bar if you're below the one-fifty mark. And, uh, Bland County is requesting about thirty thousand dollars from the grant. And Whip County Sheriff's Office will request about a hundred and twenty thousand. And also, the total project will probably cost the Sheriff's Office, I wanna say about twenty-four thousand. And, um, they're gonna pay with that, with Police Activity Fund, and then also some federal money.
And that's the matching?
Yes, sir.
And it, the general was originally like sixty portable radios and forty-five mobile radios. And, you know, uh, that's one thing, uh, Jason Music has worked with the Sheriff's Office to provide them a couple of the radios that we had to try out and to see if the signal was helping out. And my understanding is using those radios has been beneficial.
Is this, is this going digital?
It is.
It, it does give them the P, P twenty-five off, uh, what's the word, look for capability? P twenty-five capability on them to go analog or digital either one.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Farley.
Okay. Does anybody else forward have any questions?
Any motion to?
If you have a motion to approve the letter of support.
Make that motion.
I have a motion, a second, and any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Okay, Mr. Byer, do you have anything else bring before the board?
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that I have anything else at, uh, at this time.
Does any member of the board have anything to bring in front of the board at this time?
I do.
Yes.
Now, the next order meeting?
Uh, we need to go ahead and schedule those, uh, sooner than later at your all's convenience. And so, we'd like to schedule them probably a couple of weeks out, if at all possible.
What do you schedule?
The, uh, interviews for the, uh.
Oh.
Are we gonna interview all of them?
We can narrow it down, as we need you all to look at and see, uh, and look and narrow that down. The, Mr. Reed recommended the Economic Development Committee, uh, that instead of just having three from the Water Committee do it, recommended having two from the Water Committee and one from the Economic Development Committee do it. Mr. Horny, uh, I assume with your bus driving, you worked around the schedule better than.
I'm, I'm short on that guy.
Of course, school may be out by the time we get ready to do the interviews. They'll come when we get out of school. But, um.
And Mr. Hale agreed to sit on that interview.
If, if you all could look through those and, and, um, get recommendations back to, uh, to Mr. Vaughn by this, uh, by this Friday, if at all possible, we can arrange interviews two weeks out.
If I may. So you're gonna, how many are there?
Eight.
And you're gonna do a down select, the top three, and then interview those three? So I would ask for your top three on the down select, as a way of expedite.
Minimum of three. If you wanted to interview four, if you want to interview all eight, you can.
When the, uh, okay, y'all, y'all finished with that? Okay, I forgot, the six-year plan, when do we have to get this adopted by?
Well, I, I talked with Jeff after the, the hearing. Uh, he will work on the information that's provided and give us the, uh, uh, some information on the roads that they talked about. Uh, he will have the information to us at the May twenty-third meeting. Then we can, uh, we can consider it and adopt it in May twenty-third, or we can adopt it at our June, um, thirteenth meeting.
Okay, and, uh, I'm gonna ask, recommend, I know we all recommended the roads from each district. And I'll ask if anybody would recommend that we add Hogback, uh, the rest of, uh, to the, to the rural rusty six-year plan with extra money.
Yeah, I, I will. I mean, I, you know, nobody had really spoken to me about it before, but, uh.
I know we haven't voted on what we did prior to, to our meeting and our work session. Uh, we went through with people that, that's here. We went through some of the roads and, and each district, I had each district put a road as priority. Uh, we don't have but five miles that we can do. And, uh, we tried to get as much, and all of it rural rusty, to get as many miles for the, the money, extra money that Mr. Russell has brought, brought in. And, uh, Stephen, will you call out that list that we?
Yes, the, uh, unpaid section of Blade Road, Walters Road, um, Millers Creek Road from Smith Road to Heather Road, uh, Walton Furnace point five miles south. When we came across, there's a problem with cattle guards, so that would have to be looked at and addressed. Back Road and King's Chapel Road.
Okay, and I would say, you know, it surprised me that King's Chapel Road was three-thirty. I knew a lot of people didn't come around that way to the convenience center, but I didn't realize there's that many. But, uh, it was the highest count. But, uh, um, with that and adding, uh, the rest, uh, of Hogback Road from Page Park, too, it's, uh, what's the road it, uh?
Shawanda Springs Road, is that what you're talking about?
No, uh, Hogback to, uh.
Blacklake.
Blacklake, Blacklake Road.
Oh, from Roundelitt? Yeah, all right, Hogback.
From Worth's Page.
Right.
Roundlet, too.
No, it would go, yeah, to the Blacklake.
Blacklake Road.
But.
Yeah, I mean, but I can, uh, if we only have, you know, five miles, I know that this, this top part that's got added up here is four point nine seven. So, uh, uh, if we had to move to Shawanda Springs Road, I'll, and put Hogback on, uh, yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we just do that?
That, I think that would work because I think we've had maybe two, two people. Mr. Byer, we got one email, and then one person asked us about Shawan Springs, but nobody was here tonight. I know that, uh, you know, I, I did say that I would, uh, you know, bring it up, which I have. Uh, but, uh, I think there were more people here from, uh, you know, from Hogback and there are many more houses now on Hogback than there is Shawanda Springs.
And the truck traffic, too, that.
Yeah, I.
I'm the one out there to see.
I'm the one, because I, you know, when they were talking about tractor-trainers, somebody was going on Hogback, and I thought.
That's a tough road. Well, I'm not going, 'cause I'd have to take the school bus in the morning, and I'd probably meet a tractor-trainer.
Either one of y'all go out there and see what kind of tags they got on them.
A tractor-trainer or a school bus would need somebody backing up.
And I don't know where going and forth came from on the list, but thirty-four thousand dollars for that many cars crossing. I guess it's up there in the campground.
It's only point one seven miles.
Yeah. So I, I don't know where that one came from.
So. But basically, if you take his top list and take Shawanda Springs off, and then that, put Hogback in there, you'll still probably be under his.
Okay.
Threshold.
Going in for, uh, that, a line way, is that what you're talking?
Up on fifty-two off the.
Oh, I bet I know what that is. Uh, I bet that that's to, uh, to get into the campground.
That, that was my thoughts, it was there at the, during the campground.
Deer Trail Park, yeah.
Point one seven mile looks to me like it's a pothole.
What, I have a question about that. Stephen, do you have an understanding, all this discussion? When does this money come available?
This money?
Yeah.
This is, we're adding roads that would basically be in two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three.
So, you know, I'm not sure the people here understood that they were getting on the end, their, their new entries. They thought this is a pot of gold that was gonna happen. So we need to make that clear, that this is not, right now, it put them on the.
But you're on the.
Extension of the six-year plan.
But hey, Joe, the six-year plan is getting to be more of a six-year plan.
Yeah, but.
It's not a twenty-year plan like you usually.
That's true.
Some folks here didn't have six years left. I just want them to know they're still not gonna see a road, but.
Let's hope that y'all see a road. Okay, I entertain a motion to accept a recommendation for the six-year plan.
I will make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
There, there was one fellow here, he was against the special devil. But he didn't say anything after he found out it was rural rusty.
Okay.
But do we need to vote on this, or do we need to wait until Russell comes back with what he recommends?
Well, I mean, he's given us.
Basically, I took your vote just now, is to give him these lists of recommendations. And what you're saying off of here, of, of the, the top roads that he's got on here, take off Shawanda Springs Road, add Blacklake Road.
No.
No.
I mean, excuse me. Road's wrong, Hogback to Blacklake. All the other roads that are on here, on this top part of his spreadsheet, you want, I guess I wanna make sure I'm clear on the ones I read out, um, plus these, 'cause, um, Jonas Town, they said, was not rural rusty until they said it here was rural rusty.
Well, I mean, if it all still is within our money range, I mean, we might as well, might as well do them.
Okay, so I'll use this list and the Blacklake Road, and then whatever is left on this list, he can go down and put them.
Well, this Walton Furnace Road, you know, that's something we may have to look at next year if they can get the cattle guard moved and the fence and.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say, I was talking to him and Mike a while ago, and I mean, the, the part that's in that top section is the other end.
Yeah.
Without moving cattle.
Yeah.
Uh, that bottom section is the one where they'd have to move the cattle guard, and Mike was gonna work on.
Yeah, that's what I, I was looking at the bottom.
And, and Mike was even asking him, you know, I mean, if he could just pave that last little section till you get to the garden, to the cattle guard. And he said, yeah, he probably could, which, I mean, that probably wouldn't, I think they said it was a tenth of a mile, so I mean, it's not gonna amount to a whole lot of money, so.
I mean, we can, I mean, if there's enough money to pave it to the guard rail left over from these others, just add it, too.
Does Vito think the cattle guard? Does Vito think the cattle guard?
No, I.
I've never known that cattle guard go across a.
This is not the first time we've discussed this with, with these people. Uh, I don't know how a state-maintained road got a cattle, cattle crossing.
Well, you used to have a lot of them.
Actually, it's.
A lot of them still ran, yeah.
Because the farms, the, the land down there used to be divided up into three or four farms, and now it's all gone, most of it's going back to war.
Yeah, they used to be statewide, cattle guard roads. They were all over Whip County forty years ago, eastern part of county. I still think we got a typo, Stevens. Home in on, uh, one hundred as it relates to, um, Walton Furnace Road. Y'all need to educate me. I don't know.
That's, that's supposed to be six nineteen, Autonsville Road. That's running from Autonsville up to the Packing House up there.
Yeah, but it still don't come to one hundred, does it?
No, 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 one hundred should not be on.
That shouldn't be on.
That should be fifty-two, shouldn't it?
No, it should be six nineteen.
Six nineteen.
Okay, so that's just a typo.
It's coming from the river down there, Joe, coming from the river north.
Okay.
And the curve's gone from, from there up to, uh, the Packing House.
Well, I, my point, it never gets anywhere near.
Don't get near one hundred.
Whizer Highway.
It should just be six nineteen.
Okay, all right.
So, Blake Road, Hogback, and Walters Road, all, I, I, that's, those are the ones that I was concerned about.
Yes.
Okay.
There's only, only one has been taken off, and these three at the bottom. Route six seventy we've taken off, and, uh, the three on the bottom is not being done right now. We just added Hogback to them.
So we replaced.
And, and if they got money to do Walton Furnace Road, six thirty-one to the, left, to the cattle guard, you know, Jeff said they could go down to the cattle guard, but they would not go past the cattle guard.
Do you wanna leave the, the, the one that's up there on Walton Furnace Road on there? From six nineteen up to the packing plant? There's a lot of junk yard to go through there in the process.
Yeah. Well, I thought about that, 'cause I thought, is there, are you really serving anybody? But then again, with the tractor, but I don't guess, I don't know if the tractor control is coming from that direction or not.
They do come in that way.
Do they?
Well, if they can do it rural rusty, I mean, you, put it down, we might as well do it.
Is it paved past the junkyard?
No.
No. They, they don't get the traffic at the other end yet.
Yeah.
They bring their pumpkins off of, uh, maybe ram.
Exactly.
And go in on that end to the packing house.
So the goal would be the top part first, if we can.
Yeah.
Get something worked out on the cattle guard, and then just, then the second part, then the, you know, what you're saying?
I'm gonna take off, uh, six seventy.
All right.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, and, uh, no more discussion. We're all called, vote Dr. Housman.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the chairman, uh, okay. Is there anything else anybody's got for the good of the county tonight?
I, I will mention, uh, I'd hope to possibly have some information. Mr. Vaughn and myself are still working on our notice of violation on lot twenty-four, uh, uh, gosh.
Apex.
Apex Center. I was on lot twenty-four today, pardon me. Our notice of violation on the Apex Center for the Stormwater Management Plan. Mr. Vaughn is working with the contractor on trying to get all of those issues addressed in the process. I've been in conversation with, or playing phone tag most of this week, uh, with, uh, with the representatives from the state on that. So, uh, hopefully, we will have something on the next meeting agenda for you all to look at on it. Other than that, I got two quick things.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Vaughn.
We have a Water Committee meeting here.
Yes.
Either we need to move it till sometime after Wednesday, or somebody else will have to sit in for it.
Joe, you wanna volunteer to sit in on that meeting?
Not with that, Mark.
What you mean?
You don't like, you don't like Gary and Coit?
After, uh.
I want a railroad line built to Great Springs, they cross water.
We can do it Thursday morning if we need to.
When is it?
It's supposed to be Tuesday at nine-thirty.
I can't think of my schedule, but, uh.
And then we would. And then we would, I'd like to have budget on Thursday at eight AM.
Which Thursday?
Thursday, the eighteenth. That's a difficult date for a budget.
Wait a minute now. When's the subcommittee meeting?
Subcommittee's on the seventeenth for the, uh, subcommittee.
In Affomatics.
Yeah.
At four o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, when do you want the budget, eighteenth?
Eighteenth is when I'm talking to have a budget. I mean, typically it's on that Thursday.
What if we go to the, the full commission meeting on the eighteenth?
Let, yeah, Stephen, if we get to the subcommittee, I think we need to be at the full committee, commission meeting because we got good support there, and it was not filed till it gets full commission approval, is it?
No, I don't, um, I have seen the full commission vote down stuff, but, uh, I hope we don't vote down this.
Do you want to do it Friday morning?
What do we have to do in the morning? I know Mr. Willis is awful busy in the mornings.
Thursday afternoon will not work.
Well, Thursday morning, I have, uh, I have an eye for, uh, getting down on the third.
I, I have adopted Shawanda seventeen.
I mean, it's budget committee. Water Committee was...
When is the Water meeting?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, can't be seventeen.
Water Committee's supposed to be on Tuesday to the sixteenth.
It's still on the sixteenth?
But you won't be here.
I won't be here.
Are you here on the seventeenth?
No. I mean, I'll be here the seventeenth if you want to do it that night. I got a JPSA meeting that night if you want to do it after it.
On the seventeenth? It had to be at night for me.
Let's, I would recommend we do the Water Committee on the, the normal scheduled date, and if one of them could fill in for you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, let's go ahead and have it on the, on the sixteenth.
Mr. Chairman of the PSA, we couldn't postpone that meeting for a week, could we?
The PSA meeting?
Cause I'll be in Affomatics that evening.
I can, I can try. I don't see why we shouldn't do it, but...
Okay.
Well, with the pleasure of being eighteen.
Uh, how about the night thing, Friday the night thing? How about Friday morning, the night thing?
Friday morning, Friday afternoon, whatever it is you want.
Yeah, that would work great.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Friday.
Friday morning, Friday, that's the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Eighth, does that work? And, uh, whatever happens at the, well, I'll see most of y'all, the next couple days after the, the, the back of here, and I'll let you, uh, know what their outcome is.
Yeah, you mentioned the twenty-fourth for your JPSA meeting. We have got budget overview starting at five o'clock on the twenty-fourth, so as long as we're done by seven o'clock, we shouldn't have any conflict there.
That's what I was getting ready to ask you, would we be done by then?
Um, well, we can, we don't have to have it on Wednesday.
No, only we can have it whatever day y'all want.
How about Thursday night?
The eighteenth?
Yep, it's all right with Lynn and...
That's fine.
That is, uh...
I had a fire department meeting that night that he knew we did.
That is graduation night for the vocational school.
Oh, that is. How about the Thursday night, I, week after that?
The twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a half day at school, that's the last day at school. I might not be...
That night?
Yeah, I might be intoxicated celebrating getting out of school. Yeah, we could do that.
Well, check with Lynn and see if y'all, if you can do it.
Have to celebrate.
And I've, I've watched, I was, Lynn, he called me yesterday to come sign some checks, and I forgot about it.
And you didn't go to?
I told him.
Would you go to, cause he'll be calling, he comes with people to sign them.
Well, he told me he would call me today and remind me, and I hadn't heard anything from him, so...
Yes, Stephen, let me get this straight. The, the Water Committee is still on, on Tuesday at the regular time, and if, if we only have two people that can make it, then the only difference is that it just comes and people have to make a motion.
Yeah, we still, we'd still carry out business.
Okay. So it's still Tuesday at nine thirty?
Please be sure to attend the evening.
Stephen, will you, Mark, I want to go over what's happening the rest of this week and the times. We got a meeting in the morning at eight o'clock. You do breakfast, we'll just stay.
The Economic Development Committee is scheduled to meet at eight o'clock until whenever we're done, Thursday or Friday or whenever. Uh, but the Economic Development Committee starts at eight o'clock in the morning to review the Expo Center plans. On Thursday, uh, at three o'clock, Retail Coach will be here, uh, at the JIDA office, which involves Mr. Willis and Mr. Hayden. They will have a stakeholders meeting at five o'clock following that three o'clock meeting, um, that you all do not have to attend. Pepsi rolling, remember it's at five thirty if anyone wants to go to it that night. That's coming in, the Wells have previously set us some information on that. And then that's the only thing that is scheduled for the, uh, full board or committees this week.
Vocational graduation, Thursday, the eighteenth. Ray, treat George with the nineteenth for Chiswell.
Twenty, yes, sir.
Do you have any idea when the full, I'll have to ask Jeremy, when the full commission meets on the eighteenth?
Mr. Farley sent me that information, um...
Drizzle.
Drizzle. The Southwest Economic Development is on the seventeenth at four o'clock. The full commission is on May eighteenth at nine AM.
Okay. Uh, help ours in Affomatics, help ours back that night, and we may not get home tonight.
What time do you say it starts?
The full commission starts at nine.
Yeah, but what, when's the committee meeting?
Four o'clock.
On the evening of sixteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, excuse me.
Yeah, everybody's getting, right?
Really?
All right.
So, uh, I know me and Mr. Hale will be going to, and probably Jeremy, and hopefully, uh, Matthew Miller will be going down to the committee and, uh, do a little presentation for them. And I will call, uh, call the Senator Kerry before, before next week. Uh, I may try to do that tomorrow. These things is, uh, make sure everything's in line and see what his, uh, take his on, on our grant. And we're going ahead and applying for another, going ahead and putting, uh, the application in, grant application in for another seven hundred and fifty thousand for the COVID cycle. And with that being said, you've got one more thing, Mr. Horni?
Yes, sir. Uh, at one time we had, well, I actually, I had somebody that had asked me something about trash. Uh, were we looking at changing our rules for the convenience centers? Well, I know we were at one time, but I don't know where that ever went.
And we recommend send it back to the Economic Development.
Yeah, B and G looked at it at one, at one committee meeting. Uh, we looked at a little bit of discussion items on it. We can butt it back on Buildings and Grounds Committee to, uh, for the next meeting.
It just needs bigger, more common sense in it.
Yeah.
Than it is. I mean, when you, when you talk about real world, that, that just, that doesn't make sense.
Well, I mean, the problem this guy's got is the white raft that we get off of our ground bales. He says he has nothing to do with it.
Well, but that, the only thing is that's business trash.
Well, it's agriculture trash.
Well, oh, yeah, I, I thought it was not business, I know.
It's a hobby.
Business is something you might make money at.
Oh.
Eight forty-five, forty-five.
Forty-five, thirty-five?
Yeah.
I mean, I just, that, that particular trash I know about, and I mean, it can become a nightmare. I mean, if we, if we don't figure out a way for them to get rid of it, and they just pile it out in the field.
Maybe it's some work.
Do you not even recycle?
That, you, I think there is somebody that'll recycle it, but it has to be clean.
I mean, technically, they...
And it's never will be clean.
I'll use Mr. Willis as an example. When he takes all the plastic off of any of his kids that come into his business, he either has a recycle bin that it goes into, or he's got a trash bin there that goes into it. That's the same thing that, that technically should happen there. It came up years ago, a farmer was talking about, he had his milk parlor, he was taking all of his paper towels that they were using to wipe down the cows, and he said the recycling center quit taking it. He had been taking bag after bag that over the years, and when it became realized what it was doing, and another dairy farmer in the meeting said, that's why I have a, I, I think he used cloth wipes, he said, but that's why I have a trash dumpster out back that it goes into, and I pay to have a trash dumpster dumped into.
And that's...
It's, it's meant for residential household trash, and it's not meant for industrial commercial business trash.
And I, I mean, I, I'm the same way. I've, I've got a, I've got a trash box that I just throw money in.
But there's still some common sense in that thing.
Yeah, yeah, like, uh, you know, I know we say it has to be in a bag, but these, these compactors, I mean, I can understand down the Kids Lane, there's not a compactor. I can understand it has to be in a bag there, but put, just dump, taking a can and dumping it into the dumpster and then pushing it up, the bag's busted anyway. So why, why do you have to have it in a bag?
Common sense sometimes doesn't apply.
And some of these attendants at the, at the centers kind of go overboard on a little bit of everything.
Well, when we're talking about that, I'd like to ask a question at the, up at the Packing House, up above my house. You know, I, I kept asking for another big box, get another big box, and they brought one, and it was great. I mean, we had those two big boxes because there's so many people drop trash out there going to and from, you know, with it. But now they've got a recycling thing back there. The, you know, the second big box is gone.
You have to check into that.
Yeah, oh, that's cool.
While B and M change boxes back.
Or it was the last time I was there, which was last, I guess, last week.
That's the emergency weather alert telling you it's raining.
It's an alert system.
Is any one there?
I'm a rain monitor, it's raining.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Mr. Horni?
I'm done.
Uh, does anybody else have anything? If not, uh, we, we don't have to recess, we can adjourn, we don't have anything else between now and the next meeting. Okay, we are adjourned.